Now it's working.
Yep, there it is.
I move to approve the agenda.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes. Next item is the consent agenda.
Now I'm gonna recuse myself from the consent agenda.
Any comments? Motion on the consent agenda?
I move accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes. Four with one abstention. Actually, is there anybody here from the public like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, special reports and presentations. So we have two gentlemen, I'll ask you to stand up our crossing guards. You guys could stand up and come up to the podium for me. Sorry, you have to take front and center. So as most of the council knows, I know the school district and we all see them. These are the two crossing guards that make sure that our children are crossing 56 safely each and every day. Rain, snow, sleet, hot, whatever it is, they're out there. So each year I just, I want to show the city's appreciation for you guys. I mean, I know it's not much pay. You don't do it for the pay, you do it to help out your community. So I want to make sure that you guys are recognized for your hard work that you put in throughout the entire school year. And as we've reached the end of the year, I wanted to wanted to make sure and get you introduced to the council as well as to anybody watching online to know who you guys are and that you're out there every, every day. I see you every day most of the time. So I think you're the one with the grandson that you bring sometimes. Yeah. So you got, you got double duty. So I want to say thank you and as for appreciation, we got you a couple of plaques just in recognition for your help and service to the community of Baldwin City. So thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Next, Dave Hill with the EDC for his annual update.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's been a while since I've given an update for economic development and we've got a lot going. So I wanted to go ahead and make sure we got that in this year. So Glenn, I think has sent out something, y'all get something from me, Glenn. High level view as to what we gave, what we call Lawrence Douglas County Economic Development. Glenn and I belong to that. And we go to that meeting in Lawrence every other month. And you know, I, I try to put together a report that reflects very positively and highly of Baldwin. And I feel like with all the things going on in Lawrence and few things going on in Yodora, we look pretty good in the county. So really proud of that. One of the things you might have noticed on the stuff that I gave you is we did, we, we have actually made quite a bit of money over the last five years. We've been selling tax credits and we've had a really good run with that. And we're probably making about, you know, just if you want to go through our budget, you guys give us 15,000 a year. We locally have members that raise 15,000 a year and then we've been making about 160,000 a year selling tax credits. We don't know how long that'll last. We can take it year to year and appreciate it. But we work at it pretty hard every year to sell that many credits and it's pretty profitable for us. So we are accumulating that money. Well, one, we, we did make a hundred thousand dollar donation to Baker. We acknowledge that Baker is the biggest and best asset in our community. We want, we're excited about the new president of the university coming in here. We think this is a great opportunity for Baldwin and Baker to even have more opportunity to work and grow together. And then we all know that Baker's success is our community's success. And we did make a really nice donation to them. And we were hearing a lot of positive things from Baker that we really want in the community. That is, they want to take their enrollment from 800 plus students to 1500. And that's really, really a great thing to hear. That would really be a nice improvement for our community. Put a lot of people, a lot of students into businesses and so forth. We already have it good, but it could even be better. And then putting in some new dorm housing would be phenomenal too. So if, if, you know, these are great things. I've had the pleasure of interviewing some of the candidates for the Baker University Presidency position. And we've got a really great one coming in. So I'm really excited about this new person coming in to start July 1. So anyway, we did make a big donation to Baker. We don't normally donate money, but we really want to show our support to Baker and just really, really get off to a good start with some changes and improvements that are going to be reflected for, good for the community. So Baker's been a big thing we've been working on. The next thing, the really, the reason we're saving money, if you notice that we've got about $700,000 in the bank, 650 in our savings that's allocated for childcare. We, we, we really want to, we've been working for about two years with local people to develop some more childcare. And we finally have reached a really good arrangement with Rainbow Preschool. We all know that Rainbow's been here for, I think, 57 years. We know they do a great job with two and a half to six-year-old children, have about 45 kids in that range now. And we want to work with them on the newborns to two and a half-year-olds. We don't, we have a big gap in our community right now for this type of childcare. I mean, we all hear childcare shortages everywhere. But we don't realize it until we start having people, like I have two people driving either from Baldwin to Gardner or Baldwin to Ottawa every day for childcare. So I got people that need to be at our job eight o'clock in the morning, but before they can do that, they have to go to Gardner and back. And then by the way, after, again, after work. So this is just not acceptable. We have to do better. So we're gonna make a real effort to put up a new facility. And we're making a real attractive arrangement with Rainbow Preschool. We want to work and partner with them. They've just committed in the last 30 days to, you know, I'm not holding to anything until they, until we sign a deal up. But the, you know, because I, this is a big undertaking for them, but they have agreed to go ahead. They've been thinking about it. Doing their due diligence for the last six months and they've given us the green light that they want to move forward with it. So we're looking for a location and then we'll be putting up a new building. Our hope is that the new building would be owned by Baldwin City Economic Development. And then we hope to rent it to the Rainbow for a very nominal fee. Basically, all we need to do is cover bills and we hope to have the building paid for. So we don't, we're not looking for debt service or we're looking to get our investment back. We just want to have a good building. And I'll probably be talking to you guys, trying to get some tax payment, you know how I am. We need to keep all our, keep, keep our operating expenses as low as we can for these, for this purpose. So again, childcare is the thing we're gonna, Baker University, childcare are two big top priorities. The next thing that I think we're doing, doing, we have a lot to be proud of is we in Baldwin have the most lots, the built, most building lots on the market in Baldwin City. So you guys, I hope you know that the past two weekends, we had the parade of homes. I guess I, we call it the parade of homes. The Lawrence Parade of Homes, but we, I'm gonna try to work on the name next year. No, just kidding. Try to get changed to Baldwin. But anyway, we, we had three subdivisions. We were promoting this last two weekends. And with those three subdivisions, we have 120 lots that are ready to be built on. And the thing that's exciting for me and I hope our community is that they're all different price point lots. We don't have 120 lots where we're all trying to attract a same price point of a home. So we've got, you know, lots in the mid 50s, lots in the mid 60s, lots in the 140 range. So in the 140 range are one acre lots. So they're obviously big lots. And I believe there are three of them under contract. In of the 65,000 lot, we've got 11 under contract. And of the 50, mid 50 lots, we've got about 10 in process. So having good luck promoting, we're promoting Baldwin, trying to get people to look at it as a great place to live, raise your family. And again, if you really know Douglas County when it comes to residential lots, I can tell you, I wouldn't know where you'd find five lots in Yodora for sale today. I don't know where you could, today, there aren't 10 lots in Lawrence for sale. There are about 50, 60 lots coming in in the next 60 days in Lawrence. And interesting enough, here's how, here's the difference between Lawrence and Baldwin. I know we've got 120 lots and I'm guessing that we've got oh, 25 sold of 120. Lawrence, they, they're bringing 60 lots in and every lot sold. It's all pre-sold. So the day it's done, it's pre-sold. So to builders, it'd be five different builders on those 60 lots. And that'll get, that's the difference in Baldwin Yodora, the absorption of lots and real estate overall is just quite different. You guys doing the RID program that you did, R H I D, you're the driver for making this happen. Without RID, none of these developments would have happened in Baldwin. I can sometimes, sometime I'd be glad to sit down and talk about the economics of developing property. But we all know that costs the same to develop a lot in Baldwin as it does Lawrence or Johnson County for that matter. But the absorption or the market, how fast they get on the market and sell, just two different numbers. And we're not going to get residential lots developed without programs like RID. So I just want to thank you for making that happen and bringing these lots into our community. And we, we did promote the lots and promoted Baldwin at the Lawrence Home Show in February, parade of homes last couple of weekends. So those are big things that I feel like we've worked on. The thing, other thing we just did in the last 90 days, we've got a grant that we've been giving people buying homes in Baldwin if they work for the school system, Baker University, City of Baldwin, and we've included the rec department. So if you work, if you're buying, it doesn't need to be a first home, it needs to be a first home in Baldwin City. And we don't care if it's in the city or the, as long as it's in the school district, we count it. So if you're buying in Baldwin City School District and you're a teacher of the USD 348 or work for Baker, works for the city, works for rec department, we're gonna give you a $5,000 grant. And I'm really pleased that we've already done two grants. They've both been Baker professors. So we've had one person, one person who's worked at, worked at Baker for a year, finally got a house, bought it. And another person, I think they've worked here a couple of years. So they, one was living in Lawrence, one was living in Overland Park, now they're living in Baldwin. And we think, you know, I mean, I can't tell you, my, my dad grew up here and I can't tell you how many times he told me that the influence of teachers and Baker staff living in the community, how much it made the community better. You know, Scott, your dad was a professor, I believe. Having people that live here, work here, and then after work, they go do the community duties and do all these different functions. And that's what adds value to a community. I know the Boyd's have been big in Boyd's Scout all these years. So just an example of how great people have, from Baker have helped our community. Anyway, we're doing these $5,000 grants. We've allocated $50,000 for that and we've given out two, so we're up to 10 and so forth. Pretty excited about that. Okay, that's pretty much what I had on my list of things to tell you about. I think that's quite a bit. We're working out a lot. And things are going really well. It's a great time to be in Baldwin. I know when Glenn and I go to Lawrence, we get to be rock stars in Lawrence because nobody else is doing anything, you know? And I'm really glad to be in the Baldwin City Council meeting versus Lawrence tonight. They're doing the Q Restaurant and KU Athletic Program. So that's, that's gonna be an interesting meeting tonight. How about any questions or any comments or thoughts? Well, I'm gonna thank you for your $15,000 that you donate to us every year. And I just want you, I hope you can see that between our checking and savings, we've accumulated $700,000. So I'd like to think that we're putting your money, and we're not just bankrolling money to save money. We really think we're gonna look at about a 1.2 to 1.5 million dollar daycare facility. And we're gonna, it's gonna take all this money. So we've gotta keep selling tax credits and keep doing things that we're doing. And our objective is get this facility paid for so that we can make it really affordable for all these people using daycare. We want the daycare to be successful, not have a big rent expense so they can pay good wages and retain staff and so forth. Thank you all for your time.
Thanks Dave, you.
I think.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, new business site plan for USD 348. Russ.
Good evening. The site plan for USD 348 was approved at the Planning Commission on April 8th with a unanimous vote in favor of it. Tonight, we have both the superintendent and the engineer of record for the job that's actually in the audience to, to answer any questions. You know, they did a full-blown traffic study as well as a drainage study to, to arrive to this plan. So I'm here to answer any questions or concerns.
Is there any pushback at the Planning Commission from citizens or?
There was, you know, I, I did receive a fair amount of calls prior to the Planning Commission. And that was just, just to educate people on the process, what everything involved in it. You know, some of the questions were about drainage. You know, that was anywhere here in Baldwin, drainage is a huge issue. You know, and talked with them, I talked with some of them actually after the meeting, kind of went through full bore, the, the full drainage study and explained to them how it works, showing that they are truly reducing flow. So they're actually making it better than it currently is.
Any other questions for Russ? Thank you, Russ. Anybody else in the audience like to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment for this agenda item, council discussion? Not, oh, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the site plan for USD 348 is presented.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes. Next, we have the Lake Committee Appointments. So I got the list of names here. All of them have been contacted to let them know. But I'll list them out for you. Becky McMillan, Myra Glover, Kenny Niehoff, Chris O'Neil, Sherri Stevenson, Samuel Richards, Jay King will be the chair from the council and then Julie Kontinescu will be the other council rep on that committee. Just to develop a recommendation to this council, we'll take it through the CDC, obviously, when we come through, once you guys are ready. But and then Jay, I'll get you all the contact information for all these folks so you can start getting meetings together.
Sounds good.
We, we really went through this list and we got probably, I want to say about 12 people that put in for it. And we looked at everything. I mean, you know, wanted to make sure we had people from, you know, different levels of life involved in it. We wanted to make sure that we're, had both genders represented on the committee and then as well as people from inside the community and outside the community so that people living in that area could have an input. So there's a couple of people on here that also live outside the city limits. So really a pretty diverse group of individuals that I think will be able to create a good plan going forward. Yep, I'll send them to both of you. Is there anybody from public like to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, council discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the appointments to the Lake Committee Board as presented.
Second.
Been moved in, in seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes. Have fun. That'll be a good one.
Looking forward to it.
It'll be a good one, I think.
Yes.
Jay, just one thing on this and then that way, while we have a committee member here and I'm sure there's some listening. I talked to Matt, probably need to have that committee meeting here versus City Hall just because one of the steps and that many people have to decline those steps and then the size of the room and stuff. So you might just work with Matt on this room back here.
Okay.
Alrighty. Next, chip seal bid. Russ. Thank you guys for coming. And for serving.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, tonight we got the chip and seal bids that are coming through. Our low base bid was Betis Asphalt and Construction Company for the overlay. They came in at 130,000 even and 64 cents. That basically takes care of the, the project for, for 25 what we had outlined. Which basically on 10th Street, that was started Ames and go all the way to High Street. And then also on 9th Street, it would go from Ames all the way down to Dearborn. And then basically the streets in between 9th and 10th from Ames to, to High Street is, is part of this bid. We've worked with, with, with this company in the past. We've, we've had really good working relationship. They've, they've done what they said they were gonna do. And we're recommending approval of, of them for the bid. There is also two alternates that were also in your packet. I know when the golf course was here, you know, there was talk about doing the driveway as well as the parking lot for, for the golf course. So the, so the first alternate bid was for the golf course parking lot, which came in at $6,648. And the second alternate is for the golf course driveway, which came in at $4,977.28. Of that, we also, to, to be able to do the golf course, the driveway and the parking lot, we would have to do some prep work. We figured that it's gonna cost about $2,500 for the prep work to get everything ready for, for them to be able to do the chip and seal to where it would last. Because there is pot, there is potholes out there. It just, everything needs to be addressed to, to make it right. Of that, with, with all, you know, four deals, it comes out to 144,125.92. According to, you know, our budget for the year, we have 150,000 for, you know, street maintenance, for street repair and resurface for the year. So we're recommending approval of, of these bids, both and, and as well Betis, the, the one that bid the chip and seal, they were also the low bidders on both of the alternates for the golf course.
Any questions for Russ?
It's two different companies that are doing it.
No, no, it's, it's one company. It's, it's the same Betis Asphalt and, and Construction Company. But we had two bidders. There's, in recent years, a lot of the asphalt companies and resurface companies have all just kind of merged together. So, you know, even though we send it out for bid, we, you know, we get a small turnout for it. But it, it fell well within our budget for, for the year that we had accounted for.
Did they indicate when they'd be doing the work?
It would, it would be in the, in the summer. Is, was, was there thought process? Because that's the best time for, when you're putting that oil on the road to get it to adhere to it quicker and for it to hold for, for lasting, you know, longevity. So they, they said that, you know, once, once council would approve, then they could, could get it on their schedule. But it would for sure be this summer.
Anybody else have questions for Russ? Alright, thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Anybody from public like to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment for this agenda item, council discussion?
We had any conversations with BGA about participating at all?
So I, I did not talk to them about participating. I talked to them about doing the project, but not about participating in the project. Just because I know their funds are limited on
Yeah.
what they need to do. And I hear complaints about more golf sheds they need still because they still got a list of people. So so I did not ask them for anything. I did ask a board member to reach out to all their board about this project so that way I could discuss it here at the council because he couldn't be here tonight. And he said there was a resounding approval to.
I think it's been on their improvement list for a long time.
I guess where I come from for, you know, I would like to see us go ahead and do that. We have the items budgeted. We're using the golf course for more and more things. It's that building's being rented out more. They're getting more people participate in the, in the golf nights out there when they have them. Cross country's out there, 4th of July is out there. I mean, that space is just utilized more now, I feel like than it has been for the last, you know. Yeah. So I think it's a, it'd be a huge benefit, takes that off the plate kind of for them, concentrate on the grounds, keeping that hopefully keep improving the golf cart facilities and adding those so everybody can have a space out there if they want it. I don't know.
My only concern would be does this, this doesn't take anything away from Rob and his staff for doing any other roads?
I mean, the, so we usually chip and seal X number of roads per year. And so they put out the bid for those chip and seals. My understanding, there's, there's still some crack seal and stuff that they'll have to do throughout the year. Don't know how much they typically spend on that, on the, you know, on the crack seal stuff. But most of our roads, I mean, Russ, correct me if I'm wrong, this is one of the last few areas that have not been chip and sealed in the last five years.
Yeah. Yeah. So this is one of the most, to be honest with you, this is actually probably one of the worst road conditions. As you come down 10th as well as on, on 9th and then those cross streets back and forth. This is, this is an area that really needs addressed as, as, as we move forward to, to keep it before it gets too far away from us. You know, we, we still will have some money left in the budget to do odds and ends around the town. But, you know, we, we kind of work that in, you know, in the free time and, and whatnot. But we, we still do have some money available to make, to make repairs and whatnot for that stuff.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you, Russ. I know the seniors, that was their biggest complaint going out there for some of their events that they didn't like the gravel and it was hard for them to walk on. And if they had a walker or anything like that. So for the community, it would probably be, it'd be worth it. I just wanted to make sure it didn't hamper the city staff to make sure they get their main roads done first. But.
I just, I think it'd be an awesome, awesome thing to do. And then it's gonna be a lot cheaper to keep up and maintain in the future.
Right.
The only thing that I noticed and we're not gonna resolve it tonight, but you know, stopping the chip and seal on 9th at Dearborn, I mean, 9th Street is still very difficult to drive on with the bricks. At some point, we're gonna have to make a decision to do something about that. to do something about that street, either repair the bricks to make it drivable or chip and seal it, because it's not in our brick phase one plan.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe this summer. We start reaching out to those neighbors in that area, having some neighborhood meetings. Listen to them, see what they want to do, develop a plan, uh, kind of gauge the temperature on, you know, how much of those people that live on that street, if they want to keep the bricks. I know my feelings. I like the brick streets in Baldwin, but I also don't live on that street and I don't drive that street all the time. So I'd like to hear from those neighbors.
And it's almost undrivable. I mean.
A block's it's undrivable. Without going.
Benefit district.
Well, I know we talked about a benefit district and I think that's needs to be part of the conversation with that neighborhood is. You know, if it's a resounding, hey, we want our brick street. Then we probably have to have that conversation of the benefit district and here's how much it costs to rehab the brick streets and different things like that. I just want to start having those conversations, so I'll try to get those set up in the near future. Get those neighbors notified and have those meetings.
How far away are we from you starting on our brick street project?
We're supposed to BG's supposed to be getting us a bid back for the intersection of Eighth and High to at least do that with the cash that sales taxes generated. We have not seen that bid yet. We will continue to put in for the grants to try to get the blocks done, but to start the project, I was kind of hoping to get a bid for that intersection and do like we did on the sidewalks where we did a portion and then we connected to it for the grant so we can show the state, hey, we've made an effort, we're, we're trying to do this. We've already invested our own money and then that will make our application look better. But we have not received that bid back from BG or that cost estimate to bring it to the council. I've, I've reached out to him a couple of times. Any other discussion on this agenda item? Not on entertain a motion.
I move to approve the bid from Betis Construction for street construction and the golf parking lot.
And the entrance. There's two alternates, so I just want to make sure you're alternate one and two includes the entrance to the golf court course and then the parking area.
Okay, so the, um, street construction and the first and second areas of the golf course, the.
Alternate one and two?
Yes, alternate one and two.
There a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor for all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay.
That's what happens when you give us a.
Motion passes. Okay, next item under new business is the MPO seats. So we discussed this last month. About one of us having to, one of you guys having to take the, uh, seat on the MPO. And you all showed up. So does anybody wish to sit on the MPO committee? Counsel. Healer?
I do not wish to.
Not it. Not it.
I wish not to if I don't have.
How long is the seat for?
It's, it's a year. I think it's a yearly point appointment.
The monthly meetings?
Monthly or quarterly. They don't meet a whole, whole lot.
And some of them were on Zoom, I believe she said, so you wouldn't have to travel, but.
So Julie, it sounds like you've expressed some interest. Are you sure Julie that you don't have any interest?
I got the last one in the Lake Committee and I think if I was to take this one, my wife might, uh, with my three kids, I don't know if she would appreciate me taking another one.
Julie, I'm attempting to make eye contact with you. Anybody?
Like well at all.
Alright, fine, I'll do it.
We're gonna sit here for a long, long time.
Motion second for Julie to serve on the.
Of course she changes her mind, I motion. Uh, we appoint Julie Konstantinescu to the MP board.
Been moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Everybody to know that.
I hope there are lots of Zoom meetings.
Just like it does for the council. Demand snacks, I think I'll make you show up.
Okay, next agenda items, municipal court defense attorney case fee. To give a brief synopsis to the council on this. We currently pay the defense attorney, I think, a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars a case?
Fifty a case.
Two fifty a case. No matter how many hours he works on it. It's a flat rate of two hundred and fifty dollars. He did request an increase for that to I think three seventy five a case on it, still a case based fee. I think our current expenditures last, in the last twelve months was right around four thousand dollars total for providing that service, um, for court appointed attorney services. So we're not talking about a large amount of expenditures, but I do know that one, it's difficult to find attorneys to come down for these cases. We have an attorney that is, uh, very highly regarded for, for his work that he's done for the court. And I'd like to see us retain him. And I think this is a powerful way to, to do that. With that, is there anybody from public like to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, council discussions?
It says five hundred.
I'm just doubling what he's getting on. It's per case, not per hour.
Right, right.
I initially thought it was per hour you're getting on. That's per case.
When was the last time we adjusted it?
It's been at set that for a long time.
Go up on that.
Yeah, I will say he takes the day off of his other job to be here on that Thursday.
Do we have feedback on how he, how he does, how he's doing, any?
Great. I mean, I've, from all of our city attorneys, uh, all three of our city attorneys that we've had and prosecutors have always said really good things about him. I've met him a couple of times, but it's always been very positive feedback.
How many cases a year do we have?
Well, I mean, it's around four thousand. So if I, you know, just quick, quick math, about sixteen cases, twenty cases that he prob- probably handles on for just defense work.
I think it's overdue. I'd suggest going five hundred. I think the struggle to find somebody to replace, if he gets burned out and it's no longer worth his time, I think Glenn's recommendation's probably the way to go.
Also had, he was a prosecutor for a very long time, which makes the other job and we're trying to do those things a lot more helpful. He knows what he's talking about. He have reasonable discussions about it. He knows how to get through the discovery and the case files pretty quickly.
With that, I'll entertain motions.
I move we increase the defense attorney fee to five hundred per case.
Been moved in second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Council Committee reports budget and finance Scott.
We did, uh, we did meet, um, and the bulk of the conversation was talking about the, uh, twenty twenty six budget workshop agenda that's next Tuesday. So possible items for the agenda and certainly would like feedback from the council if they would like to see something else or remove something, but you know, maybe start with a strategic, strategic planning discussion and have a quick you know, round table around priorities and goals. Related to that from the council perspective. Q one budget update, so we can see how we're doing. You know, for our twenty twenty five budget, see where there may be some issues of concern. The budget's not holding up, et cetera. So just give a good snapshot of, of where we may need to spend more money in twenty six based on what's happening in twenty five, even though we didn't budget that much in twenty five. So it's, it's, it's a good baseline to have. And I think you'll see on some of the budgets, you know, we've been warned by, uh, our, um, financial consultant that, you know, the electric utility is gonna be something to, to see, look at and see how we're doing against what we forecast. So we all talked about that rate increase. We'll see that as well. And then, um, as we normally do have the department heads present their twenty twenty six budget priorities and needs. You know, projects, capital requests. And, you know, and I think Glenn's working with them on, and on also on those projects or requests, tying those to how they support the strategic plan focus uh, and performance indicators, right? So we've, we'll have a strategic planning discussion, then we'll see what they were proposing they need to do or think they want to do in a prioritized way and, and see where those fit, right? And hopefully there's some alignment with, you know, what the council would like to see. So those are the three areas, three things we'd talk about. That could be a long meeting. Uh, we'll try to be quick about some of the strategic planning discussion. Q and budget update should be fairly quick and then, you know, most of the meeting will be the apartment heads talking about their budget request and conversations. But in, no, no, no decisions will be made, obviously, but what we'll need to talk about when we get into the budget, actual budgeting is those lists will be more expensive, more costly than we'll have money to do, right? So there's gonna be prioritization necessary. So they've been asked to come forward with their prioritization list. And then we have to map all the departments together and figure out, you know, what the budget's gonna look like once we get the assessed valuation. Um, and then we'll have that conversation and then we can decide, you know, how far down we want to go on a department. You know, budget wise, or just say, hey, here's how much, you know, you have for twenty twenty six and let them prioritize it. So that will be, you know, the follow on conversations we'll have. So anything you want to hear different at the meeting or talk about or omit? Okay. The other thing we talked about, USD three forty eight is replacing the FEMA door or putting in a FEMA door at the Performing Arts Center. That's remote controllable. Okay, so you think about it, it's a community storm shelter. And not having the ability for somebody remotely to unlock that really limits how quickly you can get it done. So it's a great addition, kind of surprised it wasn't there all along. I wasn't even aware it wasn't there, but.
It was on the board when that was approved.
I know, but we couldn't afford it.
I was just curious.
So I'm surprised we didn't do that. But now they're, they're wanting to, to make it right. So they requested, so it's a twenty two thousand dollar estimate. And they requested for the city to participate in half of it. You know, and it being a community benefit, uh, we just briefly talked about it at the, um, budget finance committee, you know, do we have a place to find in the budget? There's several places we could do it. It's, you know, under Glenn's approval authority. So it really was just talking about, does this make sense? You know, as a city to participate and that's why I wanted to mention it here. So if you have strong feelings either way, now be the time to bring them up, so. Okay. And the last thing we just talked about, the public defender pay rate, just kind of figuring out what that would look like or that would hit the, you know, what the budget looked like there. And, you know, it's not a dramatic number, so that we're certainly able to cover that. And that was the extent of the meeting. Next meeting, this Friday, seven thirty AM at, uh, second floor of City Hall. And what we'll try to do is finalize that agenda and figure out, you know, what we're gonna present and try to make it in a way we can get out of there in under two hours. That's the goal.
Community development core.
Yeah, we did meet. Yeah, I kind of felt like we didn't, but it was right after, since the council meeting was on the first last month, uh, we met on the fourth and it was a quick one. We just discussed the, uh, city lake appointees. And, um, that's it. So the next one will be Monday, May twenty sixth, second floor, City Hall, four o'clock.
Alright, public safety Susan.
We have not met since the last meeting and, uh, we meet next on the thirteenth at four o'clock.
Didn't we meet?
Not since the last meeting.
Not since the last one?
It was the same day as.
Public works Julie.
Uh, we have not met since the last meeting and, uh, our next meeting is this Thursday, the eighth at nine o'clock.
Strategic planning Scott.
We, we had, have not met. And we will be talking about some strategic planning at the workshop next week, but no, uh, meeting has been set.
City Minister staff comments?
Nothing further.
Any further council comments?
I have a couple of things. The last meeting, um, we had someone that, uh, wanted to change the Fourth of July. When they're, I have his paper with me. He wants to change the, make it shorter, I think. Return to the four day sales period of July one through four. So we never did discuss it. I just thought, you know, we had a citizen come forward and we never discussed it and I think they need to.
We did discuss. We did. Discuss in CDC.
It was, uh, so I can talk on that a little bit. So that was that?
We didn't discuss it at the council.
No, that's fine.
So the people that are listening need to know what's happening.
Sure. So if you recall, we still have not seen a Fourth of July when we all decided on the path moving forward the last time we discussed this. Remember the big issue was that you might not catch a weekend date.
I think we did change it.
I think we changed it before the last one though, or was it right after last year's Fourth of July?
The, the new ordinance was, um, in place last year.
For last Fourth of July? Okay.
I mean, it wasn't a dramatic reduction. It was a reduction in about three days and the cutoff was at ten PM. On the weeknights. And that was in, in play. And I actually was impressed and surprised that it was pretty much adhered to.
Yeah, we all.
From a, from a time of day and I was, I was very pleased with the citizens. So it was in place, but it's still, I think, a seven day. You know, depending on when the fourth falls, it's still seven days to make sure you capture a weekend. And, and I didn't know if he was asking, I assume he was asking to line up the, the fireworks shooting time with the sales time and not just change, is that what, is that what the request was? Refresh my memory.
It was sales.
Well, but he, I think what he was meaning was let's just line up when you can shoot them with the same days you can sell them. I'm, I'm guessing that's what he was asking.
I mean, if we can put it back on the agenda, I just feel like it's gonna, I mean, we've only had one year of this. If, if it is, I, I couldn't remember if we. So.
Feel like we revisit this every year and.
I felt like the last one was a really good compromise on both sides. I think, as a matter of fact, I remember us all sitting here and being like, that is.
Yeah.
Pretty good.
Thought we finally landed in a good place.
And if we didn't get a, like a resounding resistance last year, I don't know why it would be worth it. I mean, we can, it just seems like we beat this one to death.
It depends where you land on it. Either you don't want them at all or you, you want them, you know, for two weeks. And, you know, I, I think we made a compromise and again, wherever you're at, the compromise wasn't enough. If you don't like them and it was too much, if you do, so I, I'm comfortable with where we're at and give it another year and to get more feedback. I mean, we had one citizen come forward. I haven't had anybody other than the people that don't want it at all. They continually say, what are we, you know, why are we doing this at all? other than people that don't want it at all. They continually say, what are we, you know, why are we doing this at all? And that's not going to change. So
The people who want them more.
So we're going to make everybody unhappy, right? That's what we do. But I I'm okay with what we spent a lot of time on last year trying to get to. Even though I'd be in favor of shortening it myself personally, but I think it was a compromise, good compromise.
Okay, I just thought it needed to be brought forward. The other thing is, do we have an update on our crosswalk?
So I, last time I spoke with BG was both about the eighth street and high, eighth and high intersection for the brick streets and their crosswalk. For Eighth Street and for Heritage. Supposedly that's been put out for bids, I believe, from by BG. They've told me that it'll be done by fall, by the fall school time start. But since that's under a KDOT grant, that is kind of all in the state's hands. We really don't play much part in that. But so, yeah, no, supposedly it's supposed to be done this summer, but we haven't heard anything more. I haven't. Any other comments from council? Not I've had a request for an executive session with the council, myself and the city attorney for an employee matter. Let's go in for eight until 8:15.
I make that motion.
Second.
Removed a second on favor, say aye. Opposed nay, motion passes.